Okay, good evening. It is 5:30 PM on Tuesday, July 20th, 2021, and this regular meeting of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission is now called to order. For the record, I'm Jason Welker, Chairman, residing in City Council Chambers at City Hall 1123 West Lake Street in Sandpoint, Idaho. Also present are Commissioners John Hastings, Tom Riggs, Kate Weisman, Slate Cam, and Mo Dunkle. Commissioner Porchuk is absent this evening. First agenda announcements, are there any general announcements or reports from the Commissioners or from city staff?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have an announcement tonight. I wanted to introduce the Commissioners to a new staff member we have here at the city. Maevyn Evans-Louter has joined us here to my left, has joined us this week as our Parks Planning and Development Manager. So you may see her from time to time in Planning and Zoning Commission's meetings because she is involved in planning matters particularly as they relate to our parks, open spaces, trails, watershed planning, all of that will will fall under Maevyn. So she works with our planning staff on the IDS side and across the organization. But she is also a planner with our organization and also handles, she will handle construction management actually of our projects in Parks and Recreation and Open Space. So want to take the opportunity and you'll be hearing from her tonight a little bit as we get into talking about the downtown waterfront and some proposed code changes related to that. I wanted to hand it also over to Amanda to introduce at our last meeting, I mentioned we had a new senior planner onboard, Tess Cooper, and she is here virtually tonight and will also be part of the presentation and wanted to give Amanda an opportunity to introduce Tess as well.
Thank you, Jennifer, and good evening Commissioners. Tess Cooper is on, as you can see her on the screen there, and as interviewed by Jennifer last week. Just as a reminder, Tess comes to us with extensive experience in planning, also has a strong background with an environmental component to it as well as recreation. So we're really excited to have her on the team. She will be transitioning here to Sandpoint permanently. While she's in that transition, she's going to be working remotely for us and is currently taking a deep dive into our code and our comprehensive plan and assisting us with some of these revisions. So we wanted to have Tess in attendance tonight so that she's available to you for any questions. But you will be seeing much more of her as we continue to get applications coming forward. Tess will be presenting on those as well.
Would it be possible to just hear a brief introduction from the two new staff people? You're up, Maevyn.
Hello, thank you for having me. And briefly, I've been living in Anchorage, just north of Anchorage, Alaska. I live on Denina in land. You can see from my, my house there, you can see the Cook Inlet, and you can also see the Nolly and a peak called Gold Star Peak. I am a Gold Star sibling. I lost my brother in Afghanistan, so I have strong military roots. But while I've been in Alaska, we were able to name a mountain after Gold Star families. So it's an honor to move here and recognize your indigenous community as well. And I look forward to incorporating some of my lessons learned from Alaska here. I think we've been doing stuff up there on the extreme level and your climate is similar, but maybe not as harsh and not as large scale. So I feel very fortunate for the opportunities that I've had up there and look forward to combining forces with all of you and realizing your visions through the master planning process that has been so successful over these last couple of years. So I'm here to help you get things done and feel free to contact me anytime. I am on board now and my email is working as of today. So, thank you.
Great.
Maevyn brings about 10 years of experience as a senior planning and development manager for Parks and Recreation up in Anchorage, Alaska. So she's not new to, to what the position is. In addition to that, she's a trained landscape architect as well. So and will be getting her license here in Idaho as she's transitioning to the position here. So ton of construction management experience and is used to carrying a workload of many more projects than we actually have in a typical year here in the city. But as we move forward and talk about funding and of our Parks Master Plan and potentially do we look at resort city taxes and a 1% tax, is that something we consider moving forward? Maevyn will be heavily involved in those efforts.
Jennifer, can you explain where Maevyn fits in this flow chart we got at our last meeting? Is she under the City Planner and the Planning and Building Services Group or?
No, this, this position is assigned to Parks, Recreation and Open Space, which is a different division. So okay, Parks and, and the flow chart that you got is for the Infrastructure Development Services Division, which is typically the division with primary and with primary responsibility for planning and zoning. So Maevyn is over in Parks, Recreation and Open Space, separate division. She works closely with Kim Woodruff, our Parks and Rec Director, and her position reports to me related to development projects.
Great, thanks. Welcome, Maevyn.
Thank you.
Am I saying that right? Maevyn or Maevyn?
Yes, Maevyn.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Tess, mind introducing yourself?
Certainly. Thank you Commissioners. My name is Tess Cooper. I'm currently residing in Western Washington on Woodby Island. I have nearly 10 years of experience in county and city planning as well as land use and environmental consulting. I'm really excited to get into working with Sandpoint and a lot of the code revisions and visions, changes that are coming up. We have family in Montana, just over the border there. So we have, my family and my husband and I have been traveling back and forth through Sandpoint for the last 20 years and have friends in Sagal. So we've spent a lot of time on the lake and at the Garfield Bay 4th of July Parade and celebrations and a lot of the area there. So it's a natural transition we've always been wanting to make. And it just lately, we decided to take the punch and do it. So I'm really excited to actually be a part of the community now.
Great. Thanks Tess. Welcome to you both. All right. Next agenda item is approval of meeting minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the July 6th meeting.
I move to approve the minutes from the July 6th meeting.
Hey, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Those minutes are approved. Old business, old business. Let's see. So item 5A, City Code Title IX Update, Initial Draft Code Amendments. The sole item on the agenda this evening is a presentation from interim City Planner Darren Fluke, who has a presentation and is requesting feedback on a propos, on proposed amendments to Sandpoint City Code Title IX. Darren?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Nice to be here this evening. The only amendment that I'd have to what you just stated is that this will be a presentation between myself and Amanda and Maevyn and we will just, I'm sorry, Tess, and we will sort of take turns as we walk you through what we're thinking on this latest round of code revisions. So with that, I think we should just dive into the slides. And as always, as the Commission has questions, I'd encourage you to ask those as we go and we'll just take those as they come. By way of introduction, and I'm sure that the Commission is well aware of this, but there's been a whole lot of planning done in the city of Sandpoint since the year 2000. And this is just a quick snapshot of many of the plans that you've worked on over the last couple of decades. And we're going to touch on a couple of these in more detail, but we just wanted to set the context here that anything that we're talking with you about this evening is not something new that's come out of the staff's imagination. This is a lot of hard work that the city has put in to these plans. And what we're now doing is working on an implementation scheme and working on, on the various provisions in the code that will allow us to implement the good planning that you've done over these last many years. So first and foremost, of course, we would start with the Sandpoint Comprehensive Plan with which you're all very well familiar. Tonight, we're going to be really focused on the downtown waterfront and primarily the zone in between the Cedar Street Bridge going south down to Superior. So and, and we will tell you why as we get into that. But it's, it's important for us to acknowledge that the Sandpoint City, Sandpoint Comprehensive Plan is really the plan to rule them all. And the other plans that we talk about tonight, you'll see are, are components of this plan. In other words, they've been adopted by reference into the comprehensive plan and therefore have the, the force of law that the comprehensive plan has. We did want to point out that the Parks and Open Space Planning Vision is very explicitly laid out. And Amanda, did you want to say anything additional about the, the vision before we move on?
I think you captured it well. Thank you, Darren. The intent of highlighting some of these various chapters within the comprehensive plan is just to provide you a nexus to each one of these elements and how each one of those chapters directly correlates to tonight's conversation and the downtown waterfront visioning that's occurred over many years.
Excellent. So the first plan that we should be aware of is the Downtown Streets Plan and the Design Guide. And this has, so I'll just say very frankly, some very cutting edge planning work in here. There, this is an impressive document and it has a lot of really good provisions in it. I did want to highlight just this one little paragraph here out of the Sand Creek section where it says that the city and the community have a keen interest in further improving the west side of Sand Creek. So three initial urban design landscape concepts were developed as a part of this plan. I'm going to show you those now and then we're going to move on to the next plan. But just so you know, these were the three concepts that came out of that, this planning document. And this, these have been further refined by the Parks and Recreation Master Plan that we're going to talk about next. So this was a plan that was adopted just last year by the City Council into the comprehensive plan. Amanda, did you want to speak to this before we go into a little more detail?
Actually, I think this is a perfect transition to have Jennifer kind of speak through some of the history on this and give an overview of our
Thanks, Amanda. As part of our updates, our master planning update processes over the last couple of years and in conjunction with our citywide adopted strategic plan, we began work on a Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which had significant community involvement for a period of about 18 to 24 months before it was ultimately adopted. Not only did this plan look overarching at Parks and Recreation, Open Space, Trail Connectivity and Master Planning in that regard, but we had also included four specific sites that we wanted specific site concepts created for. That included our City Beach, War Memorial Field, our Traverse Centennial, Great Northern Sports Complex, as well as the downtown waterfront. And the concept that you see here is the Parks and Recreation concept for the downtown waterfront as adopted in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. This went through a couple of different iterations and before final adoption and again was furthering the concepts that were developed in the previous master planning efforts as Darren had shown. This is still conceptual for the downtown waterfront. And again, the purpose with creating Maevyn's position was moving these concepts forward to implementation. The city purchased the waterfront site that is highlighted here between Bridge Street and Gunning's Alley. It's known as Farman's Landing back in 2016 with the primary purpose of that being for stormwater management. Significant amount of our stormwater from the downtown core drains off right through this corridor, really between Bridge Street and then the Cedar Street Bridge. And so this property was acquired for purposes of a state-of-the-art stormwater management system. But in keeping with the previous planning efforts, provided an opportunity for creating a park-like setting in our downtown. In fact, in some of our previous planning efforts, including planning involving our ultimate dissolution of the Business Improvement District downtown and just talking about the, the general character and economics of our downtown, there was much discussion that our focus and priority with the downtown was to treat the downtown core as a park, a park that has business within it, residential within it. But we wanted the look and the feel of the park-like setting. And again, particularly with that setting along Sand Creek in all of the previous planning efforts, there was a note about turning the downtown around so that it faced the byway, it faced Sand Creek instead of having the single orientation to First Avenue. So this concept envisions that. Following adoption of this as well, the Commissioners may be aware and certainly are aware that the City Council had subsequently approved a land swap with the property owner, new property owner there at Bridge and First, who is working on a development that would take advantage of this notion of turning the downtown around and also provide greater accessibility from Bridge Street down onto Gunning's Alley and a public plaza way area. So that subsequently has happened as well. As we continue to look at our planning efforts relative to land, greenbelt acquisition, public, public access to the waterfront, we continue to look at property acquisition opportunities, particularly along Sand Creek that would provide the public with more waterfront opportunities.
Anything else you want to mention about this, Maevyn, since you've been working on this?
Yeah, and thank you very much for the opportunity to, to look at this already. And it's just been a couple of days, but I've, I've had the chance to be down in the area and spent my, my last night walking around the area. And some of the things that I've, I've picked up on were the ecological aspects of what we could achieve here. When you look at this as an entire beaded network of ecology and looking at the whole Greenbelt Corridor, connecting, connecting all of that from a green perspective, connecting neighbors and visitors from a bigger access perspective. I know that when I was reading your plans over and over, I've read access and the ability for all ages and all abilities to recreate on the waterfront were key. So I, I think that this is something that is, should be considered as a high priority project. And I think you pretty much covered the rest of it.
The one last thing I would note relative to that design was the, the park design was that it was about stormwater management. It was about reorienting the downtown. It's about creating public access in green spaces along Sand Creek and really creating the vitality between where we have buildings downtown and our waterfront. And it's about economic development. You saw economic development as a consideration throughout all of our Parks and Recreation Master Planning, including specifically on the downtown waterfront. We are already hearing as a result of the adoption of this plan, we're seeing properties start to change hands in downtown. And we have multiple property owners looking at opportunities to really revitalize and reinvest in their buildings in order to bring this dream alive. In addition to that, we had in our Parks and Recreation Plan identified a couple of different locations for potential Carousel, the Carousel of Smiles, which is a project that many people in the community are working on. And there's been much discussion at the council meeting about as well. Where they've landed as their preferred site is actually the location down along the parking lot down here on Sand Creek as opposed to City Beach, which I think is in line with what we heard from a lot of community members feeling that outside of the beach was perhaps a better location. But again, supporting the economic vitality for downtown. This is another synergistic effort that we see going forward. Carousel of Smiles did a big presentation to council late last year and is planning to come back again for, with their plan and look to council for an MOU at this site to get moving forward with their capital campaign.
Amanda, can you go back a slide please? Kate, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did. Thank you, Jason. I'm just wondering what is meant by, there's two of these, one on each side, potential expansion with waterside orientation. Typical, what is being expanded there?
Yeah, I'm not sure where you should specify.
It's referencing the bridge in first.
Third one up and the second one on, on the left side and the third one up on the right side. They point to gray squares. Are those new businesses? New housing? Looks like it used to be parking or still is. I'm just wondering what's expanding.
So, and, and I'm happy to kind of help address that. I think and Jennifer can certainly tap on to this comment as well if I miss the boat on it. So you're right, on the, the right-hand side there is pointing to the gray where we currently have the Burger Dock. So when this plan was contemplated, so looking at that, that orientation is not only on First Avenue, but when you're at the Burger Dock, it's also oriented, the business itself towards the creek, right? So that's trying to say, without specifying certain businesses, potential expansion, you see that, for example, at Spuds being remodeled right now. They're redoing that, that sort of that interface that is envisioned, we're already seeing. And then sort of the, the salmon color that is also pointing to it there on the left-hand side, it talks about new commercial to consider access to the boardwalk as well as the proposed commercial and residential expansion. So same concept where those orientations are capturing both First Avenue as well as the creek is what that's intended to say.
I see. So the, the salmon colored ones are replacing one building that burned down and another that kind of fell into the creek.
Demolished, it was removed, but yes.
The gray colored ones are potential expansions of the existing buildings. Okay, thanks. That answers my question.
And are those expansions maybe envisioned as we see the current pattern, which is decks as opposed to actually four season structures or?
At that location, I would say yes, though we're not aware of any plans of any of those businesses to further expand. This was primarily based upon property lines.
Yep.
Although with that said, they do have the ability to expand to the, to their lot line. They could expand their buildings.
Potentially, that's why we're talking this evening.
The salmon colored building looks like it's outside of its original footprint. Is that?
That was part of what was contemplated in this land swap. So it is outside of their current footprint. What they are looking at and they're still in their development stage was specifically that extending to their lot line, which is currently allowed by code. And then providing in that, in that exchange for a stairway and actually with that, that private developer incorporating the stairway and it public access via a deck that would be part of that development ultimately down, connecting with the city property adjacent to the boardwalk.
And the exchange was to get additional sidewalk access along Bridge Street and widen that. So that was the, the key component to the exchange.
Does the footprint as shown in this illustration reflect the current approximate lot lines of the development there? Or has there been subsequent increases or decreases in that size?
This is, this is pretty accurate to the, the lot lines and this is consistent, I would say, with kind of what's shown here generally with what was approved as part of the land swap by the, by the City Council. Again, to the benefit of the city to pick up additional right of way that has long been desired along Bridge Street. And there was initially a conversation with the property owner of significant ability to widen along there, which private property owner wasn't interested in, but there was a significant through that land swap that council had approved. It'll allow us to widen the sidewalk there substantially along Bridge Street. You'll see it, you come off the, the bridge on Bridge Street and then it significantly narrows down was a point of congestion for pedestrians, bicyclists. It's one of our most significant points of congestion getting across there to Bridge Street.
So at, at present, does the developer of that property have plans to provide public access or is it a right of way? How would that work? How would pedestrians get from the bridge down to that? It would go underneath the private deck or would they go across the private deck?
They'd go across the deck and they have to provide a public easement.
So there's a, that's a requirement of the swap?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I would just note as well, we do not have any applications for any of the properties that you see here at the moment.
We're just speaking to the land swap as, as in the concepts.
But any future applications would have to respect that agreement to provide a public easement through there.
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions about this slide?
All right, Darren, we'll turn it back over to you.
Okay. So now that we've talked about the, the plan or the vision for the waterfront, the question is, how are we going to get there? And as you all know, the zoning ordinance is our regulatory document that sort of guides us as we look at projects that are proposed in the area. The vision of the community in this area is to treat downtown as a park. You know, this is something that's fairly common across cities in the west in particular is to create this live, work, play sort of environment where there's not clean separation between those land uses and to better integrate the downtown, you know, the urban environment within, within a more natural setting. It's also not uncommon to see cities that have, for, for lack of a better phrase, turned their back on the water. As you all know, this Sand Creek is an incredible amenity within the city. We faced a similar issue at the city of Boise when I was there, where Boise State University has, you know, has a ton of riverfront property and has essentially turned its back on the river. And so they're going through a similar process of reorienting, reorienting their campus master plan to take full advantage of that natural amenity. Currently, the Sound, Sand Creek Downtown Waterfront is all zone commercial A. That is the, the very special zoning designation within the city. It's like this is the heart of the town and the regulations are rightfully very rigorous for developing within the commercial A zoning designation. However, there are some holdovers within the, the commercial A zone that are hindering or that would pose potential issues for some of the redevelopment that you've seen on that, you know, that would be consistent with the master plan. And specifically here, I'm talking about the Sand Creek setback. So Amanda, I think this is a good spot to, to look at that. This is, comes directly from the existing zoning ordinance and it says that structures along Sand Creek shall maintain a 25-foot vegetative setback from the high watermark of the creek as established at full summertime pool elevation of 2,062 feet. So there's a number of issues with this that we're going to get into in a little bit more detail for you. But let me just highlight a couple of things. This is a fairly common type code language. And I'm sure that this dates back probably to the, you know, the genesis of your zoning ordinance. And the way we've debated this extensively between the staff about what, what we were trying to achieve with this particular language. The first issue here that we have is with the, the term structures, the first word out of the gate there. Building or setbacks are meant to apply to buildings and not to all structures. The term structures, while it takes in buildings, encompasses a lot of other things such as docks and other amenities that you might have, want to have on the water. So that's problem number one. Number two is the 25-foot vegetative setback. So on the face of that, as you look at it, you know, our interpretation has been that the, the intent of this regulation was to preserve something of the riparian zone, you know, hence the word vegetative. As you'll see, as we look a little bit closer at, at the waterfront down here, we've already, you know, you know, got a, a riparian zone that is more urban in nature and, and less natural in nature. Given that and the, the vision of the community to address the creek more fully, we think that an amendment to this, this particular regulation is in order. Anything to add there, Amanda? Did I forget something?
No, I think that was, you captured it well. Thank you, Darren.
Okay, what's next? So this verbiage comes directly from the plan that we just showed you, the image of, and it's, you know, basically stating in, in words what I just told you, which is that, you know, waterfront property is a very valuable public amenity. And making the best and most efficient use of that, that resource is in the best interest of the community. And so that's what this, you know, what the Parks and Recreation Master Plan was really trying to achieve was directly embracing that waterfront so that it becomes just a seamless feature of your downtown area. Excellent. So when we look at the zoning on the waterfront and we've zoomed out here so that you can sort of get the bigger picture, but you see the downtown waterfront is colored in the, the dark purple there, that is your commercial A zone. The white is your residential zone, your single-family residential zone. And then the gold is the commercial B zone. So the purple and the gold are both commercial zoning designations. And that is what we'll be providing or proposing an amendment to. We do not propose to change the existing setback language as it pertains to the residential zones. And so this slide is really meant to give you a picture of, you know, where the proposed amendment will, will have an impact. And so that will primarily be on the purple and the gold areas, or it'll solely be on the purple and gold areas. The white zones won't change. Excellent.
Darren, if I may just clarify, we're not proposing any changes to the residential code at this time. I do anticipate in the future, we're going to need to take a closer look at that as well. There are some elements of that code that are no longer consistent with current regulation by the Idaho Department of Lands. And so we have a little bit of cleanup that we need to do in that regard. At this time, it's just not, we're, we're trying to take this in pieces that are manageable. So at this moment, we're not talking about any of the white, but in the future, you may see some proposed revisions for the residential.
Is that in reference to the setbacks from the creek in particular or broadly?
It's more broadly, and I thought after I switched the slide, after Darren asked, what are some other issues with this that we didn't call out, which is the reference to 2,062 feet as the full summertime pool elevation. So the full summertime pool elevation, that is accurate from an Army Corps perspective and what our lake level is at, that we're all familiar with. The ordinary high watermark is not always consistent with that number. And very recently, in fact, as of last year, there's been several court cases that have weighed in on this and sort of changed the, the landscape, no pun intended, in the state of Idaho regarding the ordinary high watermark. And so really, when I talk about portions of our code that are no longer necessarily in alignment with the Idaho Department of Lands in the residential zone as well as this code, it's specifically around that. We need to take a site-specific look at Sand Creek with the Department of Lands and really take a better determination of what our ordinary high watermark is throughout that corridor. And it's unlikely that it's going to be the same throughout the entire length. So our code's a bit outdated in that regard, which is why, yes, we are going to need to revisit the residential code as well. But we kind of have to do this in chunks, so.
Can you, do you mind going back to the drawing again one more time?
Of course.
In this drawing, what is considered a structure, again, back to the definition of structure, docks. I think of building setbacks, obviously, we've got the new development at Bridge and First Street. Would the same setback applied to that building apply to the city that goes to build a, a, a expanded dock or deck for gatherings, all the others, things that are described in this drawing?
Yes.
So basically, none of this could be done with a 25-foot setback. I, I understood that the current elevated boardwalk is exempted from that. Are there any, I mean, as, I think there was something encoded, a boardwalk up to five feet or something is exempt. Yeah. A maximum five-foot improved pervious sidewalk. So that, I assume that refers to the existing, it's not called a boardwalk, but the elevated sidewalk above the creek there, which is impervious, is that why that was added to the code?
I think that code, I, my, my, I do not know directly the timing and I'm sorry, I can certainly get back to us on that. But my sense is that this code was written before the boardwalk was in place.
Okay.
So I think.
But nothing beyond that boardwalk could be added now without an amendment to code?
Correct.
In terms of impervious surfaces?
Well, in terms of impervious surfaces, but structures, if we'll recall, even in outfall for a stormwater conveyance is a structure. So you asked about the definition of structures, which is one of the components we're going to go over in tonight's presentation as far as a revision to code, is cleaning up some of our definitions regarding structures to be more consistent with industry standard as well as our building code. Because I'll, I'll read you the proposed definition, it's all encompassing in only six words. A structure is that which is built or constructed. So it's, it's pretty all-inclusive, which means pretty much everything on this would not be possible, which is why we're trying to have this conversation this evening. Because the intent, if we go back to the zoning is, is really looking at, and we're, we have another slide that's going to articulate it even better, but really looking at these zones now and then continuing to look further at both from a setback perspective, an ecological perspective, and then just a, an accuracy perspective, what do we need to do within the residential code along Sand Creek? This is not applicable to the lake.
Are there any non-conforming buildings in commercial A zone that you can point to as an example right now? That are either oriented or not towards Sand Creek? I'm just thinking like what, there, there has to be some structures that aren't a, a city paved sidewalk that are currently within that 24-foot or 25-foot setback.
I think that, and Darren, please feel free to chime in here if you have a better way to answer this question. I would say majority of what's in the commercial zone is non-conforming with this particular code. We have structures that are in the, the orange color there, just north. We have structures within the purple that's on the map all along the corridor. I mean, technically, the Cedar Street Bridge isn't in conformance. I mean, the, the examples are all along the creek. So this goes back to timing of the code and we have an entire provision within our code regarding existing non-conforming structures. So that's kind of a separate discussion, if you will.
And I think that's accurate as far as it goes. I think the best example for you to think of is the building formerly known as Arlo's.
As what? Sorry.
Arlo's.
Arlo's, yeah.
Yeah, it, you know, it's gone now, but we did have an application to replace that building beyond its existing footprint, and that was very problematic. We started down, or the applicant started down the path of a, of a variance application, which was also very problematic. And so if you look at that on the GIS map, you can see it's very obvious it hangs out and is supported by ciers within the creek where it was. And so that's, that's like your primary example of the building that doesn't comply with the setback.
And it wasn't oriented towards the creek, right? Arlo's faced First Avenue and you had a little bit of a deck out on the back, but its primary orientation was, was First Avenue.
Okay.
So that, the word is pervious, is it supposed to be pervious or impervious? It says pervious, I believe.
Yeah, so a maximum five-foot improved pervious sidewalk. So I think the intent with this is that, no, it would be an impervious. It's like a double negative, but that's why we're here to have a conversation about what can we do to improve this language.
Well, yeah, that, that is, that's much different than impervious.
I mean, pervious or impervious perspective of that, what that's telling you is that you can have a, a pathway that's perpendicular to the stream course heading down there and penetrating that vegetated buffer that, that this provision was trying to maintain.
The, for example, the Sand Creek pathway, right? Along the byway?
Yeah. Or a bridge.
Or a bridge.
We might need, maybe we need another bridge.
Maybe.
You already thought of that, haven't you?
Okay, Darren, do you, oh, my screen. There it goes. Do you want to transition to the other conversation besides ordinary high?
I do, and I, I think it would be good here, I'll just set this up and Tess, you should feel free to hop in and expand on what I'm saying or, or correct me where I'm wrong. But what you're looking at here is the flood insurance rate map that is produced by FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Association. And they are the administration, sorry, not the association. Of course, they're the agency that regulates the navigable waterways in the United States. And they produce these maps primarily for the purpose of delineating which structures can get what type of insurance. And your community participates within the, the flood insurance program. And therefore, structures that are adjoining or adjacent to the Sand Creek get better rates on flood insurance because you enforce the provisions of the federal mandate. So what you're seeing here in the hatching is basically the floodway. That's the active stream channel that conveys water just pretty much all the time. And then what you're seeing outside of that is the AE zone, which does have a designated base flood elevation. And you see those cross-sections going across the creek there. Those are delineating the, the elevation of the base flood elevation. And so because you participate, you being the city of Sandpoint within this program, what you mandate is that any structures built within those zones are built at at least a one foot above the base flood elevation. Meaning that if we, you know, flooded, and this is probably getting a little too much in the weeds, stop me if I am, Tess. But the, the base flood elevation is that elevation which we could expect a flood within a hundred-year period, a reasonable expectation of a flood within a hundred-year period. Another way of saying that is there's a 1% chance with any given year that you'll see a flood at that elevation. And therefore, the regulation says, build.
Darren, we lost you.
Finding the creek above and beyond whatever our zoning setback standards are. Tess, what, what do you want to add to that?
Yeah, you cut out there for a second, but that's the good, good synopsis is that so really relating it to both ordinary high watermark is the horizontal line to which demarks the edge of any water influence area in the upland area, and then the base flood elevation is beyond that a little bit to capture the 1% flood. So, and you can see the particular area of the plaza that we're talking about is about 2,073 feet plus the one-foot prebore. Again, where that, that really equates to our building setback. Buildings have to match that, that elevation either vertically or horizontally. And I think that's about the, the best summary there.
Yes, can you clarify what you mean by match that elevation vertically or horizontally? What?
That's a good question. So buildings can, if buildings are built in that flood zone, well, I guess, so if they're built in that flood zone, then vertically, they have to be built above that elevation. So it'd be 2,074 feet. So what that means is building it on piles so that it's vertically the, the bottom floor and all mechanical equipment is built above the elevation of 2,073. Or vertically would be meaning that, that you're actually, actually building out of that flood zone altogether.
Horizontally, yeah.
Horizontally, yes, elevation-wise.
So 2,073 is 11 feet higher than we think of our lake as being in the summer. Is that, does that allow for flooding? I, or is that where they think that the lake is and it flows out of the creek? That doesn't make sense actually because it's 2,074 even on the beach side.
It's allowing for flooding, exactly. That's the purposes, is where the, the point is to have nothing in that area that would increase flood, right? If, or displace flooding. So yes, that's an area that they want to be allowed to take the capacity of any potential flood. So by placing a structure in that, you would be displacing floodwaters to somewhere else or something else.
Okay, thanks.
And Darren, if I can just chime in here for a second as well, I, I really appreciate Tess's explanation and I, it's spot on. I do want to just add that we also have our building official, Christine Coolman, here this evening. If you have additional questions, the, our FEMA-related or our flood control provisions within code actually fall within Title VIII, the building code. The regulations around what buildings can go where and those specific locations and how they, to Tess's point, how do they get above the base flood elevation, actually plus one foot is what we've adopted by code, really starts to take a solid deep dive into the building code because there's lots of different ways to achieve that. So I just, we wanted to make sure that you had all, all perspectives this evening. So if you have any other questions, you, you also have Christine here.
I, I have a question, and that would be as relates to the, the elevation of the 2,074. The existing structures, is there any kind of threshold for remodel? Or they would then be required to also bring up mechanical and et cetera, et cetera?
Great question, and that is a perfect one for Christine. Will you mind coming up?
Is the speaker on?
Yes.
Yes?
You're good.
Okay. So there are certain types of building maintenance. Like you mentioned, mechanical, a re-roof and a mechanical that don't trigger, the building have to come into compliance with the current code. More extensive remodels or a change of use, there definitely is a requirement that the building meet the provisions of current code. So if we had a building elements that shouldn't be below base flood plus one, and it was going through a change of use or remodel, we would want to remediate that. But to be clear, it doesn't mean that the building has to be, all parts of the building have to be above, but any parts of the building that are below have to be flood-protected. And that's a little bit of a high bar.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions on this map? Move forward to some of the proposed solutions? Okay. All right, back to you, Darren.
Okay, so, so in summary, we have a plan of what we want to do. We have an existing ordinance that has some provisions that make that somewhat problematic. And we also have a controlling federal legislation, I guess. That all, that already has jurisdiction that is, has privacy over our zoning. And so how do we want to attack this, this particular problem? We've batted this around in many different iterations at the staff level. And we will bring to you a very specific code language at your next public hearing or two public hearings out, that we can then dive into this a little bit more. But by way of summary, the way we're trying to attack this is to clean up the definitions section to just make sure we've got rid of, that we're taking out any definitions that are no longer consistent with the situation on the ground today. We are looking at three separate scenarios within the downtown core within those with adjoining Sand Creek, which I'm not even trying to speak in this evening apparently. And specifically, those three scenarios are the Cedar Street Bridge south, which is which is what we're considering to be the downtown waterfront. We, there would allow building to the ordinary high watermark unless otherwise restricted by Title VIII, which is the FEMA standards. With the direct nexus back to the public is that you are building something that benefits the public and is of course consistent with the plan. The second scenario would be for the geography of Cedar Street Bridge going north, which is, here we're only speaking of that commercial zoning designation that I believe was in the Rust pillar north of the Cedar Street Bridge. And here, we will retain the 25-foot building setback from the ordinary high watermark. And then finally, we will get rid of the provision that structures other than buildings cannot be within that 25-foot vegetative setback. And so in other words, that they, those structures that aren't buildings may encroach below the ordinary high watermark, provided that a CUP is approved. For private development, CUP is not required for structures that are only maintained by the public, such as your boardwalk, seat walls, other things that might be built within an amphitheater, those kinds of things that you think of as probably parking. And then finally, the ecology and water quality aspects are being considered and dealt with by applying the applicable state and federal regulations. And that is just really to maintain best management practices and mitigate against any adverse impacts that could be created by building closer to the water. And so here, you're thinking things like, you know, limiting where roof drains are located and how the water that comes out of the roof drain is treated or captured before it goes into the public facility. Sand Creek in this case. Amanda, I'm fairly certain that I'm not capturing all the essence of this. Did you want to follow along there?
Actually, I think you did. This might be a great time to pause and see if there are any questions on what's in front of you.
I have some questions. So when you're referring to OHW, that's ordinary high water, is that ours 2062 or is it FEMA's?
Neither, it actually needs to be determined. So that is where I stated that the elevation 2062, that's more specific to the lake and what the Army Corps of Engineers has, you know, keeps it at a full summertime pool. What we need to do is have a survey done and engage IDL to assist us in determining what elevation at various locations is the ordinary high watermark. So rather than including a specific elevation, it's drafted as such that it references the ordinary high watermark as determined by the Idaho Department of Lands. So that as that may or may not continue to evolve over the years and so that it can be adjusted to site-specific locations, providing that flexibility.
Okay, and BMPs, what are BMPs?
Best Management Practices.
And then nexus, what do we mean by direct nexus to public benefit adopted plan? Add nexus to, what is a nexus in this context?
Great question, and I apologize, I think that was my choice of word, not Darren's. So, and it's hard to capture a two-page code revision in just a few bullets. So I do apologize for the use of that word. What we're intending here is that our current code, you've seen, it's a paragraph regarding a setback. There are currently no requirements that we, when we process an application for development, that we notify and/or bring in for discussion and potential conditions, any other regulatory agency. So the proposed revision is actually adding this link or this connection with federal and state agencies, both from a notification perspective. So if we're getting a building permit application, we'll send that application to all applicable agencies. That includes the Department of Environmental Quality, the Army Corps of Engineers, IDL, all of them. Similar to what we would do for a subdivision application, but we don't do that with every building permit. So the proposed code is saying that when we get a proposed building permit or a construction permit on any property adjacent to Sand Creek, we will notify the agency so that they have an opportunity to weigh in on what best management practices may need to be applied or what permits may need to be issued and authorized before we ever even issue a building permit. Right, so it's just trying to provide that connection within our code to further support those other regulations.
Would it be wise for the city to have an idea of what permits may be required before issuing those notifications to agencies? I know from experiences, sometimes agencies ignore those notifications. They're busy, they don't necessarily, you know, have the bandwidth to respond to every inquiry. So if the city had a list of, you know, federal permits that might be required for?
We do, our building official, as well as our interim city planner, as well as myself, are very familiar with which permits are required, but it's very unique to the situation. My experience in my short time here over the last three years has been that the agencies do comment. Sometimes the comments might take a little bit of time, but if it's applicable to them, they will comment. If we send a notification to the Army Corps of Engineers and there's no water on the site, they don't, they don't really have a role, right? So, like I said, my experience is they will be engaged, particularly when we're next to a creek like this, so.
And I would just add that the fail-safe here is that we put that in as a condition of approval. So before we issue a building permit, we require a sign-off from the applicable agency with the applicable permit. And before we give out a building permit, we have to have that documentation.
So the three scenarios here, scenario two, north of Cedar Street. Is that commercial B? So are we really talking about maintaining the 25-foot setback for commercial B, but removing the 25-foot setback for commercial A? Or is there something specific about north of Cedar Street Bridge that makes a difference?
So the purple actually is commercial A in the zoning map and can't point very.
Oh, Cedar Street Bridge is quite a way south to.
Yes.
Commercial A.
And the nexus, I can use that word, with the Cedar Street Bridge, is that really defines our downtown waterfront. And that's, you know, in alignment with our adopted plans, as well as our past plans and our comprehensive plan.
If we make changes to zoning for commercial A, won't it apply to all of that purple area? Even the lakeshore? And does it not imply that then commercial buildings can be in the setback even on the lakeshore? Or how are we writing the code? So it, it sounds like we're writing code, so it applies just to that portion of the creek front between Bridge Street and Cedar Street, is that correct?
No, if I can clarify, Darren, please chime in here as well. So the code revision would apply to all commercial zones, even though it doesn't necessarily apply to C because C is not along the waterfront, which is the green. But it would apply to the purple and the orange color there. And it's written in a fashion that it's referred to as a special standard for properties adjacent to Sand Creek. So it would not include
The lake.
The lake, and it would not include Ponderay River.
Yeah, that's correct. So the gold that you see there on the map, that starts at March Street. That's the southern border of March Street. And you can tell from the map there, given the, there's not a ton of properties along there that would be impacted. I mean, there are some, it's not that it has no impact. But Amanda is exactly correct. We, the way we envisioned this would be applying to the commercial zoning designations. And that's just in the purple and gold that you see on this map.
Just a quick, so I have a point of reference. I was here in 96, 97, but I don't recall being in the downtown area. And that's the last big flood year that I'm aware of. Where did the water level come up in that Sand Creek area? Is anybody, anybody here, anybody know? I know I was living on waterfront at the time, and my dock was about six feet underwater. But I'm curious, in this particular area, how high the water came?
I think that parking lot was.
The parking lot was underwater. I don't know if it got into any of the building basements or anything, but.
Is that 96, 97?
Yeah, spring of 97, wasn't it?
Didn't we just have a few years ago, high water where everybody was waiting down their docks?
Yeah, but it wasn't as high as the 97. But.
Great question.
I don't know, about 11 feet higher than.
I'm just kind of figuring where that. High watermark might be defined, but.
Here's the real high watermark, right?
No, I don't know the answer to that, but that's something we can certainly run the ground before we come back to you with the revision. And we expect to have better graphics for you, by the way, when we come back with the revision so that you can see how this really applies.
It will take us some time to redefine the ordinary high watermark with IDL. That is a process that we anticipate as we move things forward, so.
So can you clarify once again, the FEMA standards? What, if we adopt an amendment to code that allows what these three scenarios describe, and then the city invests millions of dollars in this beautiful waterfront park, and we put the carousel of smiles right on the water, and then we have another flood like 96, 97, are we not eligible for insurance? What are the implications? I mean, this is millions of dollars of investments in public infrastructure that we're talking about that's going to be on top, like on the water.
It's a great question, and I think I'm going to give you like a soundbite of a response, and then I'm going to ask Christine to come up to the podium if I don't mind. Speaker's not working as well as I thought, I'm sorry. And my soundbite is, we're going to build it correctly. So we've learned a lot over the years throughout the nation about how to construct within the floodplain. We will continue to do our best to keep all structures out of the floodway, which was that red area. But the floodplain, there have been substantial, I would say, provisions within IBC, the International Building Code, to address for if a flood happens, how do we protect these buildings? So the building code doesn't apply to things like a boardwalk or a dock. And so in coordinating with FEMA, we, if we're going to put in, let's say, a boardwalk in the floodway, that red area, we actually have to do a hydraulic analysis, an engineered hydraulic analysis to show that offset that Tess was talking about. When we do see a flood, how is this going to function? How is this going to work? And really engineer it correctly and build it correctly so that that investment doesn't get damaged through the process. And then further to building it correctly, make sure that we're building it above, you know, the floor elevation, one foot above what our base flood elevation is, so.
I could see that applying to buildings, but something like a pedestrian plaza? Or there's a lot more than just buildings, as we said, structures. Is that a concern to the city? How do we keep, that's 11 feet above the regular elevation of the lake. I can't imagine a pedestrian plaza being, you're going to have kids doing backflips off into the creek. It'll be awesome for the kids, but it.
Yeah.
Realistically, some of this is going to get floated in our lifetime or in our children's lifetime. Is that just a thing that the city is expecting and is prepared for?
No, the general response would be to improve the area so that is prevented. So providing flood control measures along Sand Creek to prevent that, like so many communities have done to be able to capture plazas on their waterfront. I mean, you see it around the nation. You can look at Portland, you can look at San Antonio, you can look at Napa, California. I mean, many municipalities have gone through this parks planning effort, and I know Maeve can probably speak to it as well, to construct, I hate to say construct walls, but construct bank stabilization efforts and plazas in a manner that is accounting for that if it happens in the future. So, do you want to add anything to that that I missed?
No, I mean, I think I could add a little bit as far as my experience in Alaska. A lot of our green belts and then our coastal properties were protecting park assets all the time. And what we're doing up there is a combination of the engineering combined with the landscape architects and the ecologists. And so a lot of times, we're balancing fish habitat and trying to improve that as well as filtering the sediment and trying to, you know, keep the water clean. While from an asset management perspective, I'm trying to maintain the assets. You know, if I'm in charge of the trails or plazas or whatnot, it's a very, it's a very dynamic process when we work together on a team. There's not a black and white answer. And the technologies in regard to what we're talking about are moving so fast right now because, like Amanda was saying, there's all these lessons that are being learned around the nation. Frankly, from a design perspective, this is a project that would not just excite designers, but it would excite engineers and the environmental team as well. And so it's a very, it's a very exciting project from that perspective because we can implement the latest and greatest technologies, but they've also been tested in other places, you know? And so we're seeing great opportunities there. A lot of times, what I really like to do is always start with the wildlife and start with the fish and look at that first, what are their basic needs? And then, you know, because they can't speak for themselves, and it's really our job to do that. And so, and then combining that. And, you know, I think we've got different concepts, and the concept that you're looking at in the master plan is strictly that, it's just a concept, it's merely a placeholder. So once we dive into the actual design, when we know exactly the height that we're working with in the elevation, that's going to really tell us and dictate what the design should be and what type of a solution is. And we will bring all the proper people to the table for that, such as the scientists and the different engineer types and whatnot. Yeah, I think, you know, this is a constraint as it is right now. I mean, this, the code frankly is, it's a deal-breaker for a lot of things. So, yeah, it doesn't scare me to change it at all. I think this is obviously outdated and wasn't a consideration when it was written. And, you know, I'm dealing with the same thing, or I had been done the same thing in Anchorage, exact same thing. And a lot of times, the historical mapping, when they select that, it's a pretty arbitrary point and elevation when they select the ordinary high water. So I think it was simply an oversight at the time, is my guess. I don't know, I can't speak to the history of it, but that's what I'm thinking. So it doesn't, it doesn't have any red flags to me. In fact, it's going to be in our benefit. And I think any sort of infrastructure that we put in, in the Parks Department side of things, would certainly be a vast improvement to what is there now. So we're more vulnerable now than we would be if we were to go ahead and implement some of these opportunities that have been prioritized in the master plan.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, please, Tess.
Thank you. And I just want to give a little bit of perspective in the point of why we bring up the FEMA and the base flood elevation to this. And it's not to scare, and it's not to really be concerned with flooding. What it is, is more because we're removing a 25-foot setback for buildings, what we want to bring to your attention is that there's still going to be a limiting factor, that even though we will be removing a 25-foot setback to what is now deemed the ordinary high watermark. So that's an unbuildable zone right now. So with potential concern of getting closer to the impact of getting closer to the creek and the impact to the creek, all that we want to really emphasize is that there is still going to be a limiting factor that is going to keep buildings away from that creek, which is now going to be regulated through FEMA instead of through our codes 25-foot setback. So really, truly tonight, that's the only reason why we are bringing this up, to give you an idea that there is still going to be a limiting factor of how close buildings can get, but that we're just differentiating out and separating out other structures that can potentially get closer and are more water-dependent related to get closer that aren't necessarily going to to be as important with those setbacks or the FEMA protections. Does that help in kind of what set the stage of why we're bringing that up?
Yeah, sure.
I have just a question here too. When you were saying that the ordinary high watermark is going to be site-specific, does that mean it could be different in Cedar Street Bridge South than Cedar Street Bridge North, even though they're?
Likely not by much, but yes.
Yeah.
I have a question about the Arlo's comment earlier. It looks like Arlo's is an active project. So it's possible that he's, he, she, whatever organization that they have, that they're already permitted to do. Okay, so they're not.
There's no application for a permanent structure there.
Just demolition, right?
Just demolition.
Okay, so there's, he's, whoever is not caught in between old code and ordinance and new?
No, and I can speak to that just very briefly. That situation is unique, given its existing condition prior to it being demolished and the fact that the city deemed it an unsafe building. existing condition prior to it being demolished and the fact that the city deemed it an unsafe building. So within our non-conforming code and how we treat existing structures that need to be reconstructed, there's a very specific provision around when it's deemed unsafe, you're allowed to construct back to its original footprint. And so while they haven't applied for a building permit yet to reconstruct, our anticipation is that they will remain within that provision of code.
They could rebuild on those pilings in the water.
Correct. Well, not necessarily on.
Some new ones, some improved.
Some new pilings within the water, assuming, back to Jason's point, that they have all the appropriate permits that they need from the Army Corps, IDL, DEQ, Water County, there's, there's a long list.
But no variance or CUP required from the city?
Correct, because there's quite a bit of latitude in our non-conforming code, given their specific situation.
So we could see an application tomorrow for a new structure that is built out over the water.
That is to the previous footprint of their original structure, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, do you have some more slides?
We do. Did you have any other questions on this?
Are there any more questions on this slide?
I just have one. Is, is that the proposed view or potential view? Is that fairly close to the Parks Master Plan? Or, or some of the stuff that was presented a few years ago?
That we showed earlier?
Yeah.
Yes, that is out of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. That's the concept that was adopted by City Council.
Okay.
Okay, I think you can go, go ahead, Darren.
Okay, I think that's all we had on chapter or on the Sand Creek. We're going to move on to a couple of other items that we had that we want to put in the amendment. So if there's any other questions on Sand Creek, we'd be happy to take those. Otherwise, we just move on to a wholly different topic. Okay, great. So this is an extremely minor, yet extremely important change. Basically, the, the way the commercial code is constructed is all the land use standards apply across the board to all three commercial zoning designations. However, all three commercial zoning designations are not homogenous. They're, they're very different in their character. The commercial C zoning designation allows for multifamily dwellings, but it has no standards for multifamily dwellings. And it puts staff in a bit of a pickle when we get applications to do multifamily within the commercial C zoning designation, and we don't have standards. Your code does specify within the mixed-use residential zone, which is the fourth commercial zone in Chapter Two of the Sandpoint City Code Title Nine. And it simply says that when you do a strictly multifamily project within the MUR zone, that you're to refer back to the RM zoning designation for the building standards. And that's what we're proposing to do with the commercial C zoning designation is to add this very minor footnote, footnote number nine, which just says multifamily developments in the CC zone shall be subject to the Designing Dimensional Standards of 9423 of this title, which is the, the RM zone and the standards that apply to multifamily. So that's really all there is to it. We do have a couple of applications that are hanging around out there in the ether that will be coming forward probably sooner rather than later, and this would be extremely helpful to us. So we would be hopeful that this goes through quickly and easily.
What would happen at present if an application came through? Would there just be no standards because it's not dictated in code?
That's correct. And what we would do, we would do our very best to apply those standards. And it may or may not be an issue depending on the applicant. But what I can tell you is that it makes the city vulnerable. If you have an applicant that's litigious and doesn't like a condition or two, and I think it would be difficult for us to defend in court. I know Fonda's there in the room today if she wanted to, to speak to this, but we will put conditions of approval on. It's just that we feel vulnerable should we have the wrong applicant.
Makes sense. Thanks. Any questions on this slide? Okay, you can go on, Darren.
Okay, and this is the last one that we have for you, and this came up rather recently. We do have a rather long list of ordinance amendments that we'd like to get to. There is some question about, you know, whether we tackle this in a more comprehensive way or whether we take it in a more piecemeal approach. But this is one we feel should be addressed immediately as well, and so we'll bring it forward with the other two that we've discussed. And basically, we have an antiquated definition and land use within the ordinance, which is for a tourist home. And basically tourist homes are the the predecessor of short-term rents. Before there was an Airbnb, there was tourist homes. And your code does have a definition, which you see here in a strike-through format. And those tourist homes are allowed within the mixed-use residential zone. So what we're proposing here is basically to remove that land use from the, the MUR table of allowed uses and then to remove the definition of a tourist home from the definition section. We will, of course, scrub the code to find any other instances of, of that, the use of that term so that we don't miss it like we did the first time when the mixed use, or rather, when the short-term rental ordinance went through. But again, this is fairly straightforward. It did come up with an applicant or a potential applicant who was doing some due diligence on some property in the mixed-use residential. And so it raised some flags for us that we ought to clean this up.
So what will govern Airbnb-type rentals if we remove this? Because we put a lot of effort into figuring out numbers of days and distance from other homes and all kinds of stuff, some of which lasted and some did not. But what, you're saying it's superseded by Title 312, which is just something else in the code that essentially governs the, the same issues?
That's correct, Commissioner. It's the, the Title Three, Chapter Twelve is the short-term rental ordinance that you adopted for very long you were referring to. And so that is what, what will govern short-term rentals. It does now, and it will continue to in the future. It's just that this is kind of a, this one's hanging out there within the code. You know, we're someone to want to press this as a commercial use in the MUR zone. We are somewhat vulnerable to that.
In a perfect world, this would have been stricken at the same time that the short-term rental dwelling units code section was adopted. And that was just simply an oversight, I think.
Does the short-term rental language include the same, I'm not familiar with it, the same restrictions that this piece of code?
The short-term rental of dwelling units section as allowed by Idaho Code most recently after the Supreme Court basically ordered the legislature to create a statute for short-term rental units is comprehensive, yes, very comprehensive and covers all of this.
We weren't able to be as restrictive as we wanted to be. It's the way I perceived it at the time. So, yeah, now we're governed by state law.
Is there still a limit on permits for Airbnb-type homes?
Yes. We have a difference between owner-occupied short-term rentals and those that are not, so.
Is that still 35? I've heard that number.
Non-owner-occupied, depending on which zone you're in.
For non-owner-occupied, 35 in the whole city?
Yes, but only within certain zones. So for example, the commercial zone, there's exceptions to some waterfront properties, so it's not fair to say the entire city can only have 35.
Like condo desal, I understand how it's, it's not.
And given this is just a discussion tonight, I would encourage you before this comes before you for a modification, that you actually go read the short-term rental code section.
Do these recent Idaho Supreme Court decisions require us to revisit that code in any way? Is our code still conforming with the state law?
Until challenged otherwise, yes.
Okay, good answer.
And not to put too fine a point on this, but just for the commission's benefit, one of the problematic aspects of this is the MUR zone defines a tourist home as a commercial use, not as a residential use. And so that raised some other questions that an applicant, you know, or a potential applicant rightly brought forward to us, saying, well, if I, you know, the MUR zone allows for a mixed-use project, could, could I put tourist homes on the ground floor and put residents above that? Which was really working counter to the other standards that we have in New York. So that, it's a very particular kind of argument, and it's, we're not vulnerable citywide, but there are locations where, where it's an issue and it should just be. So where do we go from here? We wanted to get your impressions on all of this, and thank you for your input and your good questions. These are many of the issues that we've struggled with as, as we try to make this code work better for the city. Where we go from here is we intend to fine-tune the draft that we have of the zoning ordinance text amendment. We will prepare an application and submit that just as any applicant would within the city. And we do intend to have this back in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission in a public hearing format on August 17. At that time, you know, you'll, you'll have your standard notice. You'll have your, you'll have the text in front of you and you will, and as will the public. And then you'll hold a hearing on the proposed amendments and we'll be there in the typical format, answer the questions and hopefully have that, the ordinance amendment approved. And once you make a recommendation to the planning or to the city council, we'll then take that forward. And right now we're tracking to hopefully be at city council on, there's September 1.
So these are the only three amendments you're currently planning to present to us on August 17th. Is that correct? Should we expect any additional amendments included on that date?
Okay. I know, Mr. Chairman, this is, this is all we're contemplating at this time.
Okay.
Unless you find the phrase tourist home located somewhere else in there, and then we'll see.
Yes.
Anywhere it says tourist home in the code, you can expect us to have some strike through. But I'm not aware of any other locations in what we identified for you.
Will we have the language to review ahead of time, or will we be seeing it for the first time at the public hearing?
Commissioner, you'll have your normal lead time to see, or we'll try to get it to you a little in front of that. But Amanda, correct me if I'm wrong, but we should have that in front of you no later than a week before the public hearing.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
What is the required lead time for public notice for a public hearing?
21 days.
20, so this, will these draft amendments be available 21 days before August 17th then?
We intend to post in the B as required on Tuesday.
Okay.
Next week. And when we post, we provide a link to our website, and that will include the draft amendments. We also have a hard copy for you this evening of the initial draft. Again, as Darren said, and as it's mentioned on the slide, we still have some fine tuning to do. There's probably a typo in there, so it certainly will be amended and our legal counsel will take a final look at it, but it will be posted on Tuesday.
Okay.
And the reason this is not fully realized is we really wanted to get your impressions and your input before we took it to a, you know, a final draft that the public can look at.
Yeah, we.
Darren, I didn't mean to touch on that.
We really appreciate that. Thank you for providing us with this.
And I just really want to extend that we're going to provide you the draft language this evening. Be a hard copy. We can follow up with a Word version if that's easier for you to review. But please do not hesitate to call Darren directly if you have questions about this or a suggestion or something that needs to be clear. He is an available resource, and I would hope that you feel comfortable to engage in him and with him about this discussion before we even post for the public hearing, so.
Will the commissioners receive this deck?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
You know, I, yeah, we got, so, did you all get the PDFs I got from the decks from last?
Yes.
Meeting? That was really helpful. So if you could continue doing that, that would be tickety-boo.
I do have a general question for staff. Last meeting two weeks ago, we did hear from our former mayor, Carrie Logan, and she did point out this question of the ongoing, I don't know if it's, I guess that's my question, is there still a update to the comprehensive plan ongoing? That seemed to be going, progressing in 2019, put on hold in 2020. And, you know, I think in the next year, we've already been briefed that we should expect many new amendments to city code. Is, is there any effort to resume the update to the comp plan? Because as of now, I mean, as Darren introduced, this, this is all being conducted under the umbrella of the 2009 comp plan. What happened to the 2020 comp plan update that we were all expecting last year? And should we expect that to resume?
Great question. I'm so glad you asked because I appreciate the opportunity to respond. A couple of things. So we referenced the 2009 comprehensive plan in this presentation because it's the most currently adopted version, albeit it was amended in 2018 formally via the revisions to the airport chapter of the comprehensive plan. So the former mayor, Mrs. Logan's comments were very applicable in the fact that we've recognized the need that our permanent city planner needs to be engaged in this comprehensive planning effort. So we are continuing to actively recruit for a permanent position. No disrespect to Darren. He's doing an amazing job. But our longtime city planner is, once we have that individual onboard, our intent is to pick back up the comprehensive plan update and carry that forward. I will say that's only one component to the current pause. Where we left off prior to the pandemic with the comprehensive plan is we had conducted, thankfully, a significant amount of public engagement prior to the pandemic. The pandemic hit, which was, I would say, advantageous that we had completed our engagement efforts because we were seeing less and less engagement during the pandemic. So with that said, what we learned from that engagement is that holistically, the vision of the community and the community's priorities and goals are not largely different than what we have in our 2009 comprehensive plan. And I think Darren can kind of speak to that as well. But so that's one element. We've, we've kind of checked that some of that is still grounded today. There are some revisions that need to be applied as you've reviewed the goals and some fine tuning to that. The second component is, the next step with that comprehensive plan was a land use map update. And over the last 12 months, I would say even more so over the last month or two, we have had a significant amount of change within our community and growth and who's moving here and what type of properties are being bought. And in really needing to take a look at that, I think it's to our advantage that we've taken a pause before we've amended our land use map is my point. And so, again, to your comment on when were we going to pick this back up? We hope to have someone onboard very soon, next couple of months potentially, and pick this up in the fall. We still have the same consultant onboard, so they are waiting for us to pick it up again, and we'll be engaging in those conversations, so. I don't know, Darren, did you have anything else to add as far as the, the overall vision and kind of checking with public engagement?
And I don't think so. I, I, you know, been through the existing comprehensive plan pretty extensively and I, I would be surprised if there were radical changes to the overall philosophy and vision of that plan. I, I think anything that we do to the ordinance will be equally as applicable to the old plan as to the new plan. I think, you know, there are some high-level just structural changes to the ordinance that are going to, to help it significantly. But we had not really contemplated significant changes to the zoning or land use, for instance. And those would be, you know, that's a much heavier lift to modify those things. And I think that the changes that we're looking at to the zoning ordinance will just be equally as applicable to the, the old plan as to the new.
So the, the, the big proposed amendment tonight was very specific to a project, like a specific project, right? I mean, we're talking about between Cedar Street and Bridge Street, basically, for the Parks and Rec plan to come to fruition. Should we expect future proposed amendments to be as project-specific or much broader in their application across, across different zones and or? across different zones and or across the whole zoning ordinance, I guess is what I'm asking?
I'd say that, that's a really great question, and I would say very much the latter. This, the First Amendment that we looked at tonight was very geographic-specific. And that was to, in an attempt to better implement a plan that's been adopted by the city. By and large, the ordinance revisions that we're looking at is a reorganization of the ordinance. And then a, a very detailed gap analysis for things that are just missing. The best example that I can give you is Chapter Nine of Title Nine, which is the administration zone. And it's administration section of the ordinance, and it's completely silent on whole classes of applications. And, you know, inconsistent terminology and just definitions scattered throughout the code, things like that. You know, more of the basic blocking and tackling of, of zoning ordinance that we'll be looking to fix.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I may too, I, I do have something to add to what Amanda said and, and also to what Darren's comments. In our adopted citywide strategic plan or plan adopted by mayor and city council, one of the strategic priorities was for us to go through our city code, really from beginning to end and do cleanup and code. So what you're seeing coming through around planning and zoning is timing needing to get that through with the number of applications, but we're working through code cleanup actually and all elements beyond planning and zoning, beyond building, beyond what this commission sees. As we've got conflicting sections of code, we've, in some cases, have sections of code that are clear as mud, sections of code that can be interpreted in different ways by different staff members and even from former staff members to current staff members. So we are working through code cleanup and, in planning and zoning area that is consistent with what we're doing citywide as well as consistent with the strategic priorities and activities given to aspire city council. Relative to the comprehensive plan, the other note I would make in that regard is Amanda commented that what we had heard and tested from the public relative to broad goals and objectives in the comp plan, we had heard that there were not significant differences at that time. As we go about, get our planner on board and we go back and finalize the, the comprehensive plan, I think going back and checking that's going to be important because with all the growth, development and what that's looked like and felt in many ways, when we were asking people to envision the community and priorities, strategies and objectives, it was the community we knew at the time in a community that was experiencing a one percent growth per year. We've been at over five percent growth now for the last two consecutive years and arguably without having the stats, but based on what we're seeing in permitting coming through, we are well above that number. And we were the seventh fastest-growing micropolitan in the United States two years ago. So when those new, that new data comes out with the, the census, it maybe looked very different from that. So revisiting those, I think, will be important because we've heard from the neighbors, both at Planning and Zoning Commission as well as at city council with concerns about heights fit into neighborhoods. So it may look different. We, at the time, we had moved through, verified of the, verified the overall goals and objectives and that there weren't significant changes. And where things were then waiting for final verification of that was with the completion of our various master plans. We were doing parks and rec, water, sewer, all of the various master plans we were doing across the city because they do inform the comp plan and vice versa. And there was a lot of community involvement in all of those efforts. So that confirmation was being done, and we were in the process of completing those plans right actually as COVID had hit. And so some of them were delayed much longer than what was originally anticipated. Erin and I, late last summer, early fall, I think it was, had started, Erin, the consultant, Erin and I, in looking at initial drafts of land use map to come to Planning and Zoning Commission. And particularly where there were draft changes being worked on were related to our area city impact. And that too requires that we consider the availability and willingness to serve from our utility side of the house. So again, even in that area, land use map isn't moving on on its own in order for us to really look at what, what happens in the ACI. It is an area that is intended for the city to grow, and it's an area that then we have to have the capability of providing utilities. And you're looking at an area that you're going to grow into in the foreseeable future. We've been working through our master plan updates on water and sewer. And so some of those things held up that moving forward with that land use map late last year into the fall, when we are doing updates and verifications of our utilities systems, it requires that we go through the master planning, we get sign-off on DEQ. And in one of the cases with one of those plans, we literally have been rolling it forward on our council agenda, I think, for about five months now, waiting to hear back from DEQ. So there's multiple factors that affected our ability to move forward with the comp plan that at the time we started the comp plan. We had a lot of conversations about all of the other master planning efforts we were doing and how comp plan fit into those. And then we've had a number of factors that not only affected our timeline with our other master plans and drug those out, but it also has affected the comp plan ultimately too. And, and the plan was to get all of those other plans finalized, comp plan coming in right after that. And some of those plans, including our water master plan, we're still waiting from DEQ from, so.
Do we have any hard deadlines on the comp plan by state code? I mean, it's, it's mandated. We have one.
It's mandated that we updated every ten years.
And we had started that process, so we're in compliance.
We're good.
In compliance with that, that mandate. And arguably, and, and we've had numbers of conversations around this as we really started to see growth pick up. I mean, that is every ten years is what's mandated. When you're seeing the amount of growth that we have, every ten years is not sufficient for revisiting the comp plan. And Darren probably has more perspective on that too, but when you're experiencing five, ten to fifteen percent growth, a ten-year comp plan is probably too long.
So, so is there any chance of resuming? I mean, I, I felt like two thousand nineteen was a, a great year for civic engagement in Sandpoint. There seemed to be town halls and visioning meetings every month. It's, it was, it was really exciting.
Yeah.
The last eighteen months, there's been nothing. Are you saying that until we have a city planner, none, none of those, that citizen, that active citizen engagement will be resumed? I mean, I would personally love to see more of that engagement and bring people in and see how values and ideas have changed in the last year and a half.
I, I, we're definitely not saying that it's not going to resume anytime in the near future. In fact, as Maeve's coming back on board permanently in September, we've talked about significant engagement on our Parks and Recreation front, moving that forward, and you're going to see us picking up with other activities. We typically are not doing as much in terms of civic engagement, town halls, those kinds of things in the summer months. Because frankly, it's really hard to get people's attention when we're at peak recreation time for many, when we're at the tourist impacts, there are people avoiding the tourists and not wanting to engage. So summer is a difficult time for us to engage with citizen impact and discussions. We're typically looking at gearing those up towards fall, and we are right now in conversations about that in September. And so you'll see comp plans start to fit into that. We are actively recruiting for a city planner. In fact, we've moved forward with working with a headhunter or two to assist us in finding quality, excellent, hit-the-ground-running city planner. So, and we've been fortunate to have Tess join our team. And again, Darren, continue, but you're going to see us picking up. In fact, we've got surveys out starting going into the fall. We, we just had launched a survey two or three weeks ago about housing issues. I think you'll see a follow-up to that. We've got one that will be coming out in the next two weeks around our urban forest because that was one of our master plans that was our legging master plan. We're talking about trees in our city, our tree canopy and urban forest. We are in planning with that, and you'll see those workshops probably start in September as well. Parks and Recreation is another one, and then we're going to be going out to the community also with the survey in the next couple of weeks about parks, master planning and moving forward and funding with that. Our primary source for Parks and Recreation capital projects over the last five years has been our one percent local option tax. We've had many people in the community asking us when we're moving forward with the next capital plans. In fact, I would say as a staff person, we hear it daily from people as we're all out and about town. And I know our electeds are as well. So we're looking at kind of venturing. Does the public want to consider that again? And you'll see that coming out within the next two weeks.
Two weeks?
Within the next two weeks, we will be gauging public opinion. Yes.
So we have a big storm coming in two weeks.
Okay. Is there anything else from staff tonight?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Great. I think that's it. Anything else from the commissioners?
Not here.
No? Okay. With no new business and no further business before the commission, this meeting is now adjourned at seven eleven PM.